Hello, 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 hello. Sorry, Lee made us late. So, we're gonna get started.
It's always Lee's fault.
Um, the meeting will now come to order. Ms. Marilyn, please call the roll.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Mr. Mallett.
Here.
Mr. Alvin Dilla.
Here.
Mr. Armitaur.
Mr. Aaronson.
Here.
Ms. Bonio.
Here.
Mr. Carmouche.
Here.
Mr. Henderson.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Moran.
She's here.
Mr. Morris.
This one eat all of them.
Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Garn.
Here.
Mr. Temple. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mrs. Duschlaug.
Here.
Cam, there is a corn.
The LSU chapter of Pershing Rifle will present the colors. The invocation will be given by our LSU A&M drum major. And the pledge will be given by our very own Mike the Tiger. And LSU A&M cheerleading seniors. Connor McCrossan from Destrehan, Louisiana, majoring in civil engineering. Cade Bouillon from Lake Charles, Louisiana, majoring in finance. Great name. JT Canali, I think, from Metairie, Louisiana, majoring in civil engineering. Olivia Brown from Destrehan, Louisiana, majoring in accounting. Destrehan, y'all are out punting your coverage here. Colin Neal from Kenner. Where are you at? Kenner, majoring in mechanical engineering. Ella Semino from Lake Charles, Louisiana, majoring in human development. Tied between Lake Charles and Destrehan. Chloe Townsend from Katy, Texas, majoring in sports management. Haley Longgrass from Mandeville. God's country, North Shore. Majoring in sports administration. And Colin Womack from New Orleans, Louisiana, majoring in accounting. Got one for James in there. Please rise.
As we gather today, we ask God for the knowledge to speak the right words, the grace to consider every person who walks our campus, and the wisdom to make the best decisions for our LSU community. May the passion and spirit of our university inspire and inform our dialogue as we prepare for another fruitful season and academic year. We pray for the protection of our athletes under the guidance of their coaches, as well as the success of every student and professor that occupies these halls. As we continue in the spirit of humility, service, collaboration, and gratitude, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can sit down, thank you. I would like to recognize our drum major to share a few words with us about her LSU student experience.
Hi, everyone. My name is Katherine Mansfield. I'm a senior art history major from Metairie, Louisiana. I went to Dominican High School in New Orleans. I'm super excited to be the drum major this year and to share this football season with you guys. Go Tigers!
Go Tigers! Can you come up and take a picture, please? Are we coming up there?
Alright, everybody, ready? Here we go. What about an L for LSU? There we go. Yeah! Right here. Got it.
Here, Mike, get in. Get in, Mike. Alright. Thank you, buddy.
Mike! Oh, Mike! Mike on the mic!
This was not on my schedule. I had to, I have to get Dr. Nelson to write me an extra script for this one. Come on. Get in with him. Hurt my knee. All right, here we go. One, two, two and a half, three. All right. Good job. That was worth a delay. We're just gonna cut Lee out of whatever he was gonna say. Thank you to all of our students, including the LSU chapter of Pershing Rifle Cadets. We enjoyed having you all participate in our meeting today. It's always a great honor, and we're highly appreciative. Ms. Marilyn, has anyone registered for public comment? Except you. He raised his hand. If no one has, at this time, I will entertain a motion to recess the board meeting. So moved. Second, all in favor? Any objections? Without objection, the board is in recess. Did I mess up? Well, you put it in the wrong order then. Okay. Oh, we didn't go into, okay. I'm just seeing if anybody's awake, including me. At this time, I would like to recognize interim provo Troy Blanchard to present the request for the appointment of six Boyd professors. This marks the first occasion in LSU's history that such a significant number of distinguished faculty have been brought forward for this honor. As you know, the Boyd professorship is our highest academic rank, requiring rigorous review and the board's final approval. These appointments reflect the extraordinary caliber of scholarship, research, and teaching that continues to elevate LSU's national and global reputation.
I'm pleased to present a request to you from LSU to appoint six Boyd professors. The Boyd professorship is the most distinguished and highest professorial rank awarded by LSU. Named in honor of brothers Thomas and David Boyd, early presidents and faculty members of LSU, the Boyd professorship recognizes faculty who bring honor and prestige to LSU through their national and as appropriate international recognition for outstanding achievements. Since it was established in 1953 by the Board of Supervisors, only 79 of our faculty across all LSU campuses have been named Boyd professors. The process is strictly confidential. In fact, the candidates are not even aware that they are being considered for this honor. It is a process that requires dozens of evaluations from scholars around the world, and the faculty members' discipline, endorsement from campus leadership, the Boyd Professor Review Committee, and the president. The newest cohort of Boyd professors represent a wide variety of disciplines and hail from three of LSU's eight campuses: LSU A&amp;M, Pennington Biomedical Research Center, and LSU Shreveport. This group includes LSU Shreveport's first-ever Boyd professor, a landmark achievement for the campus and a testament to its academic distinction. As the largest group of Boyd professors ever considered at one time, this cohort underscores LSU's rising reputation for research excellence across all of its campuses. The nominees for your consideration are: Meta Guard, professor of physics at LSU A&amp;M; John Maxwell Hamilton, professor in the Manship School of Mass Communication, LSU A&amp;M; Steve Heimfield, professor of metabolism and body composition at Pennington Biomedical Research Center; Michael Consari, professor of mechanical engineering at LSU A&amp;M; Alexander Mika Briedzi, professor of history at LSU Shreveport; and R. Kelly Pace, professor of finance at LSU A&amp;M. I'd like to share a little bit about each one of these faculty members with you. Dr. Meta Guard is an internationally recognized leader in the field of physics and chemistry. Dr. Guard trained under a 2023 Nobel Laureate and has built an exceptional career at LSU since 2003, earning early promotion to associate professor in 2007 and professor in 2012. She was elected a fellow of the American Physical Society in 2011 for her groundbreaking contributions to the macroscopic theory of high harmonic generation at adiossequent light formation. Her prolific research record includes more than 245 publications, 9,500 citations, and an H-index of 52, supported by significant external funding from the Department of Energy and also the National Science Foundation. Dr. John Maxwell Hamilton is a nationally and internationally recognized scholar, journalist, and academic leader. A U.S. Marine Corps veteran with deployments to Vietnam, he transitioned from a successful career in journalism and public policy to academia. His scholarship, informed by decades of professional experience, includes eight books, such as Main Street America and The Third World and Edgar Snow, a biography, as well as the prize-winning Manipulating the Masses Woodrow Wilson and the Birth of American Propaganda, which earned two Book of the Year honors and the 2023 Sidney Coebre Award for Lifetime Achievement in Journalism History. Dr. Stephen Heimfeld is one of the world's foremost experts in obesity research and a preeminent leader in the fields of human phenotyping, body composition, and energy balance. Over a career spanning more than five decades, he has pioneered groundbreaking advances in clinical nutrition, imaging technologies, metabolizing modeling, and obesity therapeutics with innovations that are now standard practice worldwide. His prolific scholarship includes 1,300 publications, garnering nearly 79,000 citations and an H-index of 140, placing him among the top 500 most cited researchers globally. Dr. Michael Consari is an internationally recognized leader in applied tribology and mechanical failure, whose groundbreaking research, patents, and scholarly contributions have brought significant honor and prestige to our university. Over his 24-year career at LSU, he has authored 388 journal articles, five books, and more than 55 book chapters or special publications, amassing 18,696 citations and an H-index of 70. Consari is a fellow of the National Academy of Inventors and the American Association for the Advancement of Science. He holds 16 patents and 18 technology licenses, and his research has attracted more than $142 million in external funding. Dr. Alexander Mika Briedzi is a world-renowned historian, whose scholarship has profoundly shaped the study of Napoleonic and military history. He has authored an extraordinary body of work, including The Napoleonic Wars: A Global History, which won the prestigious Gilder Lehrmann Prize and the Distinguished Book Award from the Society of Military History. His subsequent work, Cudzuvo: A Life in War and Peace, earned him a second Distinguished Book Award, placing him in a rare echelon of scholars recognized multiple times for groundbreaking research. His works, published in multiple languages, are cited as indispensable by leading historians worldwide. And Dr. R. Kelly Pace is an internationally recognized scholar in spatial econometrics and real estate dynamics, whose pioneering research and mentorship have brought significant honor to the university with more than 17,000 citations and an H-index of 43. He has made influential contributions to the intersection of finance, climate, mortgage risk, and insurance markets. His co-authored book, Introduction to Spatial Econometrics, has been cited more than 9,100 times and is widely regarded as a foundational reference in the field. He has been at LSU for 27 years and has published 105 scholarly articles in top-tier journals with multiple works exceeding 400 citations. For these reasons, we recommend that the LSU Board of Supervisors confer upon Meta Guard, John Maxwell Hamilton, Stephen Heimfield, Alexander Mika Briedzi, and Kelly Pace the system's most prestigious rank of Boyd professor. Thank you for your consideration of this item.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do we take roll call of this committee?
I'm not sure this is...
We don't need one?
We're in the, we're in the main board meeting. We're in, we're in the true board meeting.
Are you going to, would you accept one englobo motion, or do you want individual motions?
I will accept one when it comes to that. I will accept one.
Is this an appropriate time?
But we didn't, we didn't go into, Trey?
We're still in the main board meeting.
Yeah, so... Hold on one second. Ask for it, okay. So Remy's correct. All right, so, Remy, you, you're in this committee, correct? Do we need to do roll call? Huh? We're still in session, the whole board, okay. So, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Before I... Go ahead, you have something?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Approved. Thank you, Remy. Wasn't on my, uh, that's okay. So, um, well, I'd like everyone to stand, and let's congratulate these Boyd professors. Okay, now I'd like to take a 10-minute break before we begin our professional development. Graduate, so we can congratulate the professors and take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Let's sit down. Audience, let's sit down. Give about 10 more seconds. Everybody get situated. I would like to ask Mr. Osvaldo Gomez, Associate Vice President for Civil Rights and Title IX Coordinator, to start our board development training. Thank you.
... of the 2021 legislative session. You could have easily taken this training electronically in your office outside of public view. But what you're doing is setting leadership by example, and I want to recognize that for every campus across the state, you know, an example of our shared responsibility and commitment to prevention and awareness. It shows to all our students and faculty and staff how important this is to you. So from the Board of Supervisors to President, Chancellors, thank you so much for the opportunity. So we're going to be covering several things this morning. We're going to look at power-based violence and the types of power-based violence that occur. We're also going to look at the difference between power-based violence and Title IX as Title IX is coming, you know, from a federal law and power-based violence is the state statute. We're also going to look at your responsibility for reporting, you know, as a mandatory reporter. We're going to talk a little bit about the support for somebody that discloses power-based violence to you, discuss, you know, how to make a report, a little bit about the consequences for failing to report, and then the resources that are available. Power-based violence comes from an act of the legislature, as I mentioned, in 2021, Act 472. Power-based violence is meant to complement Title IX, the federal statute. And what it is, power-based violence is actually looking at all forms of sexual misconduct and really focusing on those that actually wield power and use that power over another person. In fact, the very definition of power-based violence is any form of interpersonal violence intended to control or intimidate another person through the assertion of power over that person. We can see how this plays out at school or in the workplace in various ways, through sexual misconduct, sexual harassment, stalking, and retaliation. But in all of those cases, we have an individual who's willing some form of power over that other person. So in this slide, you'll see the various examples of power-based violence. And we start off with sexual assault. Then we have dating violence, domestic abuse and family violence, stalking and cyber stalking, sexual exploitation and sexual harassment. And then the law actually has what I call a catch-all phrase, which is really reads "unwelcome sexual or sex or gender-based conduct that is objectively offensive and has a discriminatory intent." The reason this is important is because we know that our students, our faculty and staff who experience some form of interpersonal violence, any type of power-based violence, it's having an effect on their ability to come to work, to study, to be present. So nobody wants to come to work and school knowing that there's going to be incidents of a power-based violence. You know, when we look at these numbers as well, you know, one of the things that our office does, it tracks the types of incidents that come, that are reported to us, whether from students or employees. And where we see the incidence of power-based violence impacting our students the most, we have sexual assault, dating violence, stalking, especially cyber stalking. When it comes to our employees, then we have more of a sexual harassment. In this regard, though, it is so important that we understand what power-based violence is, more importantly, so we're not engaging in it. That's more critical. Two, know how to recognize it so we can act. And then finally, when we say know how to act, be an active bystander, know how to address it, how to report it, how to support that individual. So when we talk about power-based violence, we also need to talk about consent because consent is really the key. So when it comes to sexual violence, for example, or dating violence, it's all about the consent that somebody has given the other individual. Students, for example, often ask us, "Are you telling me when it comes to consent that I can't ask somebody out? I can't ask them, you know, out on a date or even text somebody else?" And of course, although those incidents may be consensual, what I'm talking about is examples for, for example, if we run into somebody, like today, you met, you saw a lot of people you hadn't seen, you give them a hug, that's consensual. But you just wouldn't go and approach an individual without knowing who they are and hugging them. So when we're looking at dating violence, for example, when it comes to consent, you know, dating violence usually presents itself during the course of a relationship, but oftentimes we'd see it happen and surface after the relationship has ended. Let me give you an example. You know, let's say you have two students that have been dating for a while, and they have a great relationship, but something happens and they break up. You know, weeks later, one of them decides to want to get back to the other person. So what do they start doing? They start texting the other person, sending emails. They start trying to get in touch with them in social media, to the point that it's getting so uncomfortable that the other person says, "Stop. I don't want to communicate with you. I don't want to receive any more communication from you." At that point, they've set a clear boundary: no consent, please stop. But if that other student continues, if that other continues to engage in those behaviors, is, what we have is no consent. So we have an instance that could, started off very consensual, for example, but eventually ended up non-consensual, and it could be an incident of power-based violence. So power-based violence is broad, and it can occur without being sex or gender-based. If you recall that catch-all phrase that I mentioned, "unwelcome sexual or sex or gender-based conduct that is objectively offensive but has a discriminatory intent," you know, well, that is specifically to sex or gender-based. However, there are other parts of the sexual violence statute that just don't go to gender. Where we see this happen, for example, is maybe harassment and belittling behaviors based on somebody's race or ethnic background. You know, we could see verbal attacks on somebody's religious beliefs or even somebody bullying a subordinate. When we think about the original definition, interpersonal violence that is intended to control or intimidate another person through the use of power, that would all fit into this definition of power-based violence. In this example, you're required to report. But now there's some of these examples that I provided, you might see more of those in the workplace where we can partner with our human resources team to engage and try to create a resolution. So that's why it's so important for our office to partner with our human resources teams to make sure that when we have incidents of power-based violence, we're working in partnership to make sure we address it depending on where it lands. So one of the things I want to do here this morning is give you a series of hypotheticals so we can talk a little bit about some of these examples. What I'm going to be doing is actually reading, we'll go over the hypothetical, and I'm going to give you the answer. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about why it is and why it's not power-based violence. So let's start off with the first one. "The captain of the women's basketball team is upset with an underclassman player's performance and thinks she should be kicked off the team. The captain convinces several other players to inundate the underclassman player with obscene texts and images in the hopes of forcing her to quit the team. Is this power-based violence?" And the answer to that is yes. This is power-based violence. Why? When we look at the definition, you know, we're looking at interpersonal violence. We have inundating the individual with obscene texts and images to control or intimidate. We have the intent to bully that person off the team, the intent to control and intimidate through the assertion of power. And more importantly, the captain of the team is an individual with power. So again, this would be an incident of power-based violence. In this next example, we have two students. Alex and Sam were dating for a long time and exchanged intimate pictures of each other. They separated and began new relationships with other people. Alex shared some of Sam's intimate pictures with her new partner. Sam was angry when they found out. And the answer to this is yes, this is power-based violence. Now, it's not uncommon for students to engage in some forms of sharing pictures and messages when they're engaged in the relationship. Where we don't see consent here is to share those images without the other individual's consent. That's what makes this power-based violence because they have used that power to intimidate the other individual by sharing those pictures. And this is also an interesting hypothetical where, you know, something, again, that started very consensual turns into a non-consensual incident. This next one is this power-based violence. "An office manager has in their office a picture of a famous Renaissance painting that depicts several nude figures. A student visits the office manager and is very offended by the picture. You know, is this power-based violence?" And the answer to that is no. This is not power-based violence. Now, what we may see is maybe a lack of judgment. You know, this is also an example of an issue that we would probably work with our human resources partners, and they may take a look at it, whether, to see there's another policy that might apply to this. But in this case, the office manager is not attempting to intimidate or to control another person through the use of power. And in this last hypothetical, we have a graduate student who serves as a teaching assistant is holding office hours. One of the students in her class comes to visit and asks for guidance on a particular difficult assignment. The graduate student says, "You don't need to worry about your grade. All you need to do is take me out for dinner and see where the night takes us." And the answer to this is yes. In this scenario, although they did not specifically state whether the grade was changed or not, based on what we can read into this, we know that the graduate student has power over the other individual and controls the grade. They're using that power to intimidate or control. So yes, this is a clear example of a power-based violence-type incident. So now let's talk a little bit about the overlap of Title IX and power-based violence, as I mentioned earlier. We're often asked in our office, you know, in the Office for Civil Rights and Title IX, so what's the difference between both? Well, first, Title IX is a federal statute for gender equity. It was established in 1972 as part of the Civil Rights Act. You know, during its inception in the '70s and into the '80s, it was really about equity in athletics. I think we're all familiar with that. However, Title IX has evolved through the years, and it continues to evolve. In the '90s, we actually started to see a series of court cases, especially in the K through 12 environment, where the environment was recognizing that the harassment of females, female students in the classroom was impacting their ability to study, their ability to learn, to concentrate, and to engage. This was a major problem because it was impacting the student's academic performance, which is really that access to education, which is at the core and heart of Title IX. You know, it is that access to education or access to the workplace that is so critical. Whereas power-based violence, however, is broader than Title IX. If a behavior falls under Title IX, it's also going to be under power-based violence, but not all of these instances of power-based violence are going to fall under Title IX. Let me explain. For example, in the hypothetical situation that I mentioned earlier, where a student shares intimate pictures with the other without the consent, that's power-based violence, but if not, it wouldn't be a Title IX. But in that example, it's something that wouldn't fall under Title IX because it has very specific definitions, which I'm going to elaborate on here in the next couple of slides. Now, it's important to note here at LSU, we have one policy to address incidents of power-based violence and Title IX, not separate policies. The reason we do that is very important because we don't want students and faculty and staff to go through different processes. You know, this way, students, faculty, and staff know what to expect. And having one comprehensive policy that covers both helps ensure consistency, clarity, and more importantly, parties know what to expect. So as I mentioned earlier, under Title IX, that there are only certain things that are going to meet this Title IX standard, and these are it right here. We have dating violence and domestic violence. We don't see a lot of domestic violence incidents. However, we do have students who are married. We then have hostile environment harassment. Now, that is harassment that is so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it affects an individual's access to education. It is a very high standard because it has to be severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive to meet that mark. For example, if we have a student come to us and say, "A student in my class made an off-color joke. I want to file a sexual harassment complaint." It's not that the comment was appropriate, or it's not that the comment shouldn't be addressed. It's just not going to fall under Title IX because it's not severe and pervasive. Then we also have quid pro quo sexual harassment. That hypothetical that I shared earlier with a graduate assistant saying, "Well, take me out to dinner." Well, that's an example of quid pro quo sexual harassment because if you give me something in return, if you give me something, I'll give you something in return. Know that our faculty and our staff are very aware that this is completely unacceptable under any circumstance. Then we also have retaliation. And I want to stop here because to really emphasize the importance of retaliation. Retaliation is so important because if it's not addressed, it's going to have a chilling effect on reporting. Students are not going to come forward to report incidents if they feel that we're not going to take any action on it. So, but we also realize that students sometimes are hesitant to come forward because they know what's going to happen. So we invite students to come talk to us, anybody who's been impacted, so we can walk them through the process of what to expect and how this is going to be handled. Next, we have the definitions of sexual assault, which include fondling, rape, and sodomy. And then finally, we have stalking. Stalking has been under ice, not only at this campus, just throughout the country, simply because, you know, the advent of cell phones and, of course, social media platforms. But let me give you an example. You know, if students are in a class and the professor divides them into groups, for example, four groups so they can do an assignment, the students decide to create a GroupMe account so they can stay in contact with the assignments. Nothing wrong with that. However, one student in the class decides to use that private chat feature in GroupMe to start making advances at another student, sending repeated messages about, "I like you, I've been following you, you know, I know the classes that you're taking, I want to get to know you, I want to take you out on a date." You know, this is an example of something that started consensual and was very specific for the class assignment, turns into non-consensual where that student is using that mechanism in order to make advances towards the other student. This is also an example of setting boundaries. Nothing prevents that student, the recipient of those messages, to say, "Hey, stop. This is not acceptable," or report that. But in all of these types of cases, we remind our faculty and staff that if they're ever in doubt of what to do, if this is a report, come see us. You know, we'd rather have that conversation so we can talk to that process and make sure that everybody is informed and they get the support that they need. So what about what is not Title IX? So there is conduct that's not going to fall under Title IX, as I mentioned earlier. And specifically, according to Title IX, conduct occurring outside of the U.S. is not going to fall under Title IX because Title IX is a U.S. statute. What that means is that it only applies to behavior inside the U.S. But you ask yourselves, "So what about study abroad? We send a lot of our students overseas and to different places outside of the U.S. What if things happen outside?" You know, that's where the power-based violence comes in so we can address it from a power-based violence perspective. But also, in situations... But also in situations involving something that occurred abroad, we have to also consider the respondent, the individual that's being accused of the violence of the allegations of the incident. So they may be local in another country and we have no jurisdiction over that person. But at the very least, we have jurisdiction over that student that's been affected. So we extend supportive measures. We reach out, even if they're outside of the U.S., to make sure that we provide him some support. Next, we have conduct occurring off-campus and not on university program or activities. What does that mean? Here, thinking about, you know, our university-sponsored events, we have so many that are off-campus. Our athletic teams, our student organizations traveling, all of those are Title IX. Everything would be covered. But if an incident happens four blocks away in a building, in a complex that we have zero control and it's not affiliated, it's not going to be Title IX, but it will be power-based violence. Now, we also have conduct involving a respondent that is not part of the LSU community. And this is important because we have no control or jurisdiction over third parties that are not affiliated with LSU. However, again, we go back to the recipient of those concerns and we extend supportive measures to that student who's been affected by that third party. Now, we also, sorry, we also have complaints that are filed after the student has left LSU. We also, when students leave and graduate, sometimes they wait to file a complaint for whatever reason, it maybe could be retaliation. That's not going to fall under Title IX because again, Title IX is about access to education. So at that point, that student is no longer seeking education through LSU. So, but again, we have the ability to address some of these issues, complaints through our power-based violence statute. And then a complaint that does not meet the policy definition. You know, I earlier briefly talked about that, for example, an isolated joke in a classroom. While it may not be appropriate, it's not going to rush to that threshold of Title IX and maybe even power-based violence. But although we may not be able to address it according to our policy, nothing prevents us from having a conversation with that student or addressing that classroom behavior. And then finally, complaints that are not based on gender-based violence. You know, Title IX is exclusively gender or sex-based, so issues of harassment based on race, national origin, religion, those are not going to fall under here. So I talked a little bit about mandatory reporters earlier. So under the power-based violence statute, we have the term responsible employee. Our policy refers to them as mandatory reporters. We use this term synonymously. Our mandatory reporters are those employees who have a duty to report issues of power-based violence to our office and whether they witness it or that was reported to them. And examples of our mandatory reporters, as you can see in this slide, include our academic employees, you know, faculty, deans, instructors. Then we have residential advisors. Residential advisors are the very few class of undergraduate students that have to report. Why we do this is because residential advisors know, you know, they're the first line of defense in resident halls and they are the individual student trust the most and they approach and to offer support. Then we have coaches. Then we also have graduate assistants and graduate teaching assistants. Again, not graduate students, you know, but any graduate student that has an employment piece associated with it. And finally, any classified and unclassified staff are mandatory reporters. So as you can see, the vast majority of our employees here at LSU are mandatory reporters, including you as members of the Board of Supervisors. But those who are not mandatory reporters are going to be confidential. This is another set of employees. We've referred to this group of individuals as confidential resources. Why are they confidential? Well, in part because there's a state or federal law that provides some confidentiality, such as our mental health providers, you know, professionals, doctors, nurses and other HIPAA-protected physicians, clergy, but clergy only if they are acting in the capacity of a clergy member. For example, if a clergy member is teaching a class and it's not being clergy in their capacity, then they would be a mandatory reporter. You know, we also have advocates. These are individuals working, for example, on our lighthouse program, which I'll talk a little bit as a resource a little bit later. And under Title IX and power-based violence statute, we are required to have confidential supporters on all our campuses. We currently have about 59 confidential supporters across all of our campuses. These individuals are selected on each campus in addition to those who have confidential protection. On our campuses, we have at least one confidential supporter in each school or college because we know that if a student feels comfortable with somebody they know, somebody they're familiar with, they're going to approach them to report the incident and get some support. Now, this does not preclude the student from seeking confidential supporter in any other campus. Just know that there's somebody in their college. Again, we wanted to make sure each college had a representative to ensure that the students could reach out to somebody there. The confidential supporter is still responsible to inform the student about our office and resources and even help them file a report. Now, there are some exceptions to reporting. You know, I keep talking about mandatory reporting, but we do have some exceptions. For example, information disclosed at a public awareness event, and that could be like a "Take Back the Night." Disclosures made in the course of academic work product consistent with the assignment, and I'll elaborate that in just a second. And then disclosures made indirectly, such as overhearing a conversation, a conversation which you're not part of. You know, regarding the disclosure in academic work, you know, let's say in an English class, a faculty member asked the class to write an essay, a short essay on how they've overcome a biggest hurdle or an adversity. You know, if a student were to write about an experience with sexual violence or power-based violence, the professor would not need to report that because it's consistent with the assignment. Now, finally, disclosures indirectly in that last bullet, for example, let's say a professor is walking to the union to grab some lunch and inadvertently hears a conversation between two students. No, they're not required to report. They were not engaged, they were not part of the conversation, so they would not be required to report. So let's talk a little bit more hypotheticals. Sorry, I just lost my... So is this a mandatory report? Give me just a quick second. Want to make sure we're on the same page. Is everyone seeing this? Yeah. A student approaches a supervisor at an LSU-sponsored event on campus and discloses that they experienced sexual harassment in one of their classes. Is this a supervisor mandatory reporter in this case? And the answer to that is yes. The power-based violence statute specifically states that boards of the four systems and all responsible employees are mandatory reporters. So in this next example, a professor is visited by a student during office hours. The student discloses that he was assaulted by another professor in the department. In this case, is a professor a responsible employee? And again, the answer to this is yes. Our faculty are responsible employees. Now, the exception in this is because if the professor is a confidential supporter, then the answer would be no. But assuming that they're not a confidential supporter, so again, that would be yes. So in this other hypothetical, we have a student visits the campus mental health clinic and signs up for counseling sessions. During the course of a counseling session, the student reveals that a professor made him perform sexual favors in exchange for a good grade in the class. Is a counselor a responsible employee? And the answer to this one is no. Why? Because a disclosure in this case was done to a counselor or mental health professional during the course of providing services. So they have privilege in this case. So however, the counselor has certain obligations to provide the student with information and resources about our office. So here, I want to talk a little bit about trauma-informed care. We're often asked or commented, you know, "I understand all about mandatory reporting, but what do I do when I have a student in my office who's sharing information? How should I approach the situation?" So here, what I wanted to do is share some guiding principles regarding how we handle some of these incidents referred to as trauma-informed care. And these are the five guiding principles. Number one is safety. It is important for us to know that our students feel safe and are in a safe situation. So we would start off by saying, "Thank you so much for trusting me with this information. Are you safe? Is there something that we can do to support you at this place in this current situation?" You know, sometimes it may be an incident that occurred at a resident hall where they may not feel safe in that environment. You know, it's a housing issue, so we partner with internally for emergency housing situations. Same for students that are off-campus. Sometimes something happened off-campus, but we need to provide some emergency housing. So again, we work through that temporary housing aspect to put them in a safer place. The other thing regarding safety is depending on the disclosure is sometimes they may be in imminent danger. So what does that mean? We have to call the police, call 911. Let's get law enforcement involved. Again, we want to make sure that all our students feel safe. The second is choice. Choice is very important when it comes to trauma-informed care. When we think about power-based violence in the very definition that is controlling, intimidating through the use of power, when somebody is being controlled or intimidated, they've lost the power of choice. So for us, choice is extremely important. How do we do this? We bring choice back and give choice back to our students by giving them options. For example, you know, "Do you want to meet today or tomorrow? You know, do you want to meet in person or via Zoom? You know, what resources and support do you need?" You know, we walk them through that process so they can regain that power of choice. And we find that these simple things make a significant difference when someone is dealing with a trauma incident. The third is collaboration. I cannot stress this enough. We cannot do this alone. You know, this is one of the reasons I am standing here in front of you delivering this training is to educate our community across this campus and across our entire system. Again, it is our shared responsibility to know and understand what power-based violence is and who can assist. You know, we have a very close relationship with Resident Life, our Student Advocacy and Accountability, our HR team, our Police Department. You know, these are all critical resources. In fact, I can list so many other individuals and partners across the institution, including many academic units that work collaboratively with us in order to provide support to our students, faculty and staff. The fourth is trustworthiness. You know, when someone experiences power-based violence, trust has been broken. So it's important that we build that trust again. An example, if I tell a student that comes to our office, "I'm going to reach out to you in two days and give you an update," and I don't do that, regardless of the reason that I had for not calling back, I am just contributing to that lack of trust. So I need to be very aware of what I promise and what I share. So we also tell our faculty and staff this as well. In other words, be careful about overpromising. Often, our first response is to say, you know, "This is going to be taken care of, that other student is going to be expelled, don't worry about it." And what we see there is we're overpromising because we haven't gone through that process. So again, we want to make sure that the process is followed, but it's very important that we set reasonable expectations that we can follow through with. And then finally, we have empowerment. Empowerment really goes to all of them. When we want students to feel empowered about their decisions, empowered to move forward, empowered to go to class, and again, these are the guiding principles when it comes to trauma-informed care. Now, I want to add here in this section a little bit about how we also extend trauma-informed care here at our campus. We've created a trauma-informed interview room. And that is a room that's specifically designed with, you know, we've researched from soothing colors to the chairs to the environment to create a space of comfort for the individual coming in to share, including technology, including a TV and monitor so we can look at the information that they may have to share. You know, we find that the space truly contributes to having an interview with the individual in a neutral environment, in a trauma-informed environment. And then in supporting our students as well, when they disclose an incident of power-based violence, you know, and although I've been talking about mandatory reporting, mandatory reporting, it's so important, but right before we click that button, we just want you to take a second, 60 seconds, and think about care, connect and then contact. You know, what that means is this three-step process is we want to provide care to the student. You know, I know they're sitting right in front of you and they have an immediate need. But the first is to provide care, show empathy, so some level of support. You know, we might have to say, "Well, we can connect you with some resources. I know that when we make a report, you're going to get information to more resources." It could be something as simple as, "I'm on campus here and I don't know where the office is, let me walk you through the office. Let's get somebody there to help you." And then finally, contact. Contact our office, file a report, as I'll show you how to do that. But again, that contributes to providing that empathy and support when it comes to supporting our students. Now, during my presentation, you've heard me use the word supportive measures several times and support for our students. What are these? You know, supportive measures are available to all of our students, whether they file a formal complaint or not. Supportive measures are available to our parties, and this includes the complainant, the respondent and witnesses. You know, the purpose of supportive measures is to keep the student engaged in their academics, their extracurricular and co-curricular activities. You know, our goal is to keep that student, again, engaged in their academics. And one of the most common supportive measures that a student asks for isn't academics, academic in nature, and like in cases of sexual violence or sexual assault or harassment, oftentimes, students may feel lost and very overwhelmed and not able to concentrate and they can fall behind in their studies. So we want to make sure that the incident does not interfere with their academics. So we will work with our faculty to say, "Can we extend a deadline? Is there something that we can, you know, change a little bit? Is there even makeup work associated with that?" Or even to the point of an incomplete grade. Again, know that our faculty across our system are amazing in helping provide supportive measures in the form of academics and others to our students. You know, my, you know, we're very proud of that aspect. We don't get pushback. What we get is, "How can I help?" You know? As I mentioned a little bit earlier, we have housing, changes to housing. Let's say we have a concern with two students, roommates who can't, you know, be engaged during this, while we conduct the review, so we accommodate through change in housing. Now, we also have job-related type supportive measures. And let's say, for example, we have two rec center employees. We might have to change their schedule to make sure that they're not in the same, you know, seeing each other while we explore this. You know? Then we have no-contact orders. No-contact orders are extremely important because this is basically telling the other person not to contact a person anymore. And not only the contact, we explain the type of contact, which is through social media, in-person, you know, through third parties, and these help create that safe space. Then we have safety planning. Safety planning is extremely important and that's something that our case management team does. And it's very personalized. It's a personalized strategy to make sure that we find out what the exact needs of that individual and create a plan to provide that support. What it entails is listening to the student's concerns very carefully. And the student may say, you know, "I'm afraid to, you know, to be next to this person on this campus, you know, I don't want to be in the same class." You know, so we prepare a plan to accommodate those specific needs, such as looking at changes in class schedules. And then finally, we definitely connect to health and mental health resources, you know, which I will talk about a little bit more in our resource page. So one of the things we are also asked sometimes is, you know, "The student has asked me not to report. You know, I'm conflicted. They really don't want me to say anything, but I have to say something because I know it's policy, it's the law." You know, it's a very tough situation to be in because the law says you have to report. So what we find is that if you talk to that student and let them know what to expect as part of that process, what's going to happen next, it actually creates a sense of comfort. Because the inclination is for the student to think is that, "Hey, you're going to report something and all of a sudden, there's going to be a major investigation and I have no control over that." So again, we don't want them to, you know, go there. So by, for example, helping the student better understand what's going to happen when making a report, it's going to help them feel a little bit better about the situation. And really, what's going to happen is that once you make a report, the student is going to get an email from a member of our Title IX case management team. You know, that email is going to include an opportunity, an invitation to come in and information and resources about what's available to them to support them. They don't have to respond to the email and it often happens, you know, "I'm not prepared to talk." You know, and so again, they don't have to respond to that email and they don't have to. But when they meet with a member of our team, know that they will hear the report, go through the details of what the report, what are the options available, and have them then, again, that back to choice and trusting that process. So we find that when we walk our students and by just letting them know what to expect when the report is filed, they feel a little bit better, you know, although they might not agree that a You know, although they might not agree that a mandatory report is required, they will feel and they will have a better understanding of the process to follow. You know, earlier I talked about retaliation. Here, I want to just reiterate the importance of retaliation, non-retaliation, and immunity. It is important to note that retaliation is absolutely prohibited by both federal and state law and university policy. It protects both the person who's making the report, whether they experienced a behavior, witnessed a behavior, or participating in an investigation from our office. Anyone who is involved in our process is going to be covered under retaliation. Now, our policy also provides immunity, which means that anyone who's acting in good faith shall be immune from disciplinary action for violations of a code of conduct, for example, recently related to the incident. Let me give you an example of immunity. You know, let's say a faculty or staff member came forward and reported what a student told them. But later, they find out what was reported wasn't entirely true at all. So that person actually made a good-faith report based on the information they had at the time, and immunity would protect them. But what about failure to report? I touched on that a little bit, and the statute does include a provision of accountability for failure to report. You know, so it's, statute basically says, "A responsible employee who is determined by the institution's disciplinary procedures to have knowingly failed to make a report or with the intent to harm or deceive shall be terminated." Again, we will go through the investigative process and explore the details before, again, any action is taken. But again, how do you report? What's next? Now, you will have access to the site to make a report 24/7, whether you're on your phone, your tablet, your computer, on vacation. In order to make a report, you go to the Division of Engagement and Civil Rights in Title IX. There's going to be a white navigation, as you can see in this image, at the, at the very top right, lsu.edu-engagement. And you will see at the very far top right, you see "Report an Incident." That link is going to be anywhere on our site, regardless of where you navigate on our page. It's never going to go away. You know, those, there are three tiles. You know, once you click on "Report an Incident," you're going to get three tiles. One of them is what I've been talking about, Title IX and Power-Based Violence. And there's going to be two other tiles for an ADA and Accessibility Report, and another one for Discrimination and Bias. What follows on this page is as well is several FAQs, because we want to make sure that whoever's making a report, whether it's a self-reporter or you're a mandatory reporter, there's going to be information about what happens when you make the report. Again, those FAQs provide more information about that process. You know, and as we navigate into our site as well, that white... I'm sorry?
I have a question, it's minor, but is this appropriate time for a question? If not, I'll wait till the end.
Okay, I'll continue and then we'll entertain some questions at the end, thank you. So at the very top right, navigating through our Title IX page, you'll see, again, it just turned to purple. That's all it was, with white letters. And that way, you can make a report there as well. Again, it'll pop up a self-explanatory report form where you can complete the information and send to our office. Now, again, of course, our LSU mobile app, it's, it's very important. You know, whether you're a student or whether an employee that have access to this app, and what you see here is just a couple of print screens that tell you and what that screen looks like. In this particular version, the report icon is located at the top far right. What you're looking for is that logo of the two hands and the heart. You will see that the logo on the very far right pops up, and again, you make the report through that system, you know? Reporting through our online system helps us track the report in our case management system. Once you make the report, you will receive an automatic email that acknowledged that you received the report and then notifies us so we can proceed with the next steps of engaging the parties. But again, what if you are on our campus? You know, there's additional reporting methods. You can also make a report in person by visiting our office. We are conveniently located at Heim's Hall, which is at the right of the quad, so faculty, staff, and students can call us to make a report. They can visit us, they can stop by, and we'll be more than happy to support them in that effort. You know, key is to getting that information to us. You know, and as I mentioned a little bit earlier, we can't do this alone. You know, we have several LSU campus coordinators throughout the state. You know, depend heavily on their support as well. They're skilled and well-versed in matters of Title IX and power-based violence. I have the privilege of serving as a system Title IX coordinator where we meet and discuss matters affecting all our campuses. They do great work and help me understand, actually, the subtle nuances that are present at each campus. We work together and collaboratively to make sure that we can address these issues across our system. So what happens next? You know, here is, okay, so I filed a report, what can I expect? Again, our office will continue with the outreach process, and let me walk you through that outreach process, you know? Once we have an initial report, we start our process, which means that the report does not trigger a formal process, an investigation at that moment in time. As soon as we are alerted, that a, a member of our case management team will contact the victim and offer, you know, support, discuss supportive measures, and resolution options, which is very key, such as filing a formal complaint. After their meeting, the person will receive a recap email, a summary email, summarizing all the information they discussed with the, with the intake, and is going to ask if they're actually interested in filing a formal complaint, depending on the situation that was reported. If they choose to file a complaint, then we, of course, will provide them the link to the actual formal complaint form. The link is not actually publicly available. But we do this, the reason we do this is because we don't want a person to accidentally trigger what they believe is going to be an investigation or a process that they not, were intended to start. And also, as a Title IX coordinator, you know, I have the option to actually engage the formal complaint process if there is a situation where I feel there is an issue of danger to our campus community, where it's been the best interest to actually file a formal complaint. So I want to go through a couple more hypotheticals here. So let me start off with this one. A supervisor is approached by a student. She tells the board member that she is being stalked by a professor at the university. She used to have a romantic relationship with a professor and then ended it. Ever since, the professor has been showing up where she is on campus and sends her multiple texts a day after she has requested not to be contacted. The student is scared and does not know what to do. Does a university board member need to report that? And of course, the answer to that is yes. Supervisors must report incidents of power-based violence. Does this need to be reported? A professor approaches one of her colleagues. She tells her colleague that her chair of the department has been sexually harassing her. Does this need to be reported? And the answer to this question is yes. It is important to note, though, that the power-based violence statute does not technically require reports from employee-on-employee issues. However, LSU has broadened that because we can't address behaviors that we don't know about. So it is so important that we know what people are experiencing so we can intervene and address those behaviors. So yes, again, you would have to report. In this next hypothetical, a college is investigating an allegation of sexual harassment committed against a student by a university staff member. Other employees have been contacted by the investigator to participate in the investigation. An employee who reports to the accused staff member is called in for an interview. Shortly after that interview, the employee is told by their supervisor that they are being terminated. The employee tells his colleague about this. Does this need to be reported? And the answer to that is yes, it could be a potential issue of retaliation. So yes, it would need to be reported. Does this need to be reported? You know, for a creative writing assignment, a student hands in a story to, uh, hands in a story for a creative writing professor about a girl who was assaulted by her professor. During discussion of the story in a workshop, the student says it is an autobiographical story about something that happened to her within the last few months. And the answer to this is no. The reason is because a disclosure was made in the course of an academic work product consistent with the assignment. Note that although this is not a reportable item, the faculty member will, you know, will probably take the student aside and privately and share some information about resources and support that may be available on campus. But again, it's not a mandatory report. So as I was talking a little bit earlier, we have several support resources available to our, our students and our community. So our case management team, for example, usually, in one of the slogans and term they use is "Healing cannot happen in isolation." And this ties into the amount of support that we need to provide anybody who's been, you know, affected by a power-based violence or Title IX issue. So one of those resources is a lighthouse program. I mentioned earlier, advocates. You know, our lighthouse program here offers free confidential support and advocacy to our LSU students, such as, you know, coordination of evidence collection. If it's a case of rape or sexual assault, obtain medical care. And emotional support, you know, they too help with arranging safe housing as they secure academic support as well, so. And they could actually help the student file a police report. Again, incredible resources that are available to our students. You know, but, you know, earlier I mentioned our Student Health Center, and medical care is so important because it allows for students to identify and treat physical, visible, physical injuries, test for STIs, provide emergency contraception, medical screening. You know, and I talked a little bit about, you know, whether it's a sexual assault or a rape case, you know, the SANE exam. You know, we partner with our community and make sure we have a, a, a SANE nurse to come in to try to go through that process, to make sure that student gets that support. And of course, mental health services by trained counselors as well. Lots of great resources for our, our parties. And then we have community resources. You know, again, we can't do this alone, so our community partners play a critical role in supporting our students, faculty, and staff. You know, some of the services provided include education on sexual assault, 24/7 crisis intervention support, shelter, counseling, and even legal advocacy, depending on the situation. So we've come to the end of our presentation. Hopefully now you're walking away, and will be walking away with a little better understanding about what power-based violence is, what Title IX is, when to make a report, how to make a report, how to support our students to report, and then the many resources that are available to our community. So again, this is a summary of what I've covered, and I, this concludes the training. I thank you again for having me provide the training to you today and appreciate your time and attention.
I did, thank you. On the, on one of the prior slides, I think it was the Frequently Asked Questions page, there was, I think the question was something along the lines of, "Will I find out what happened to my report?" And the answer was, "No, unless you're the individual, you're the victim, you won't know what happens with the reporting." That felt to me like it would have a little bit of a chilling effect, you know, in, in these situations and others like it. People's fear is generally, "I'm going to have the courage to go forward, and then nothing will happen." And so I was wondering if, if our framework took that into consideration, what the rationale is for not letting the reporter know at least that it was, what happened with the report, and whether or not that, not informing them, has or could have the kind of chilling effect that, that I'm talking about.
Absolutely, Mr. Williams, and that's a great question. And I think for clarity, I think it warrants clarification. And we're talking about a mandatory reporter who is not involved in the situation and not engaged in that situation. And I think we needed to differentiate that, to clarify that, because oftentimes, you know, we have an interest in saying, "I made a report, are you doing something with it?" You know, once a report is filed, there is an automatic email that pops up after making the report that briefly explains that. But I'm, to your point, and looking at our FAQs, that's something I will take back to make sure we add that clarity, because yes, absolutely, Mr. Williams. It is extremely important that people know that it's taken me this long to get to this point. I want to make sure that I'm being heard. Thank you. Very well. Thank you so much, have a wonderful morning. Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to recess the board meeting. So move Valencia, Second, James, all in favor? All opposed? Without objection, the board is in recess. Rebecca, will you please convene the academic committee?
Ms. Marilyn, would you please call the roll? Or Ms. Nicole?
I will call the roll for her. Ms. Boney?
Here.
Mr. Alvendia? Ms. Henderson?
Here.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Mallett? Mr. Morrow? Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Williams? Madam Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Would you please read our consent agenda?
So there are nine items on the consent, consent agenda for your consideration. The first is a request from LSU A&amp;M to name the unnamed School of Music Recital Hall in the College of Music and Dramatic Arts, the John G. Turner and Jerry G. Fisher Recital Hall in recognition of their remarkable generosity, including a $4 million gift in 2018, the largest in the college's history. As one of the most vibrant and heavily-used spaces in the college, the recital hall is a cornerstone of the college's music programs. The second item is a request from LSU Shreveport to name a room in the College of Business, the Davis Business Engagement Center. In recognition of Don and Sally Davis's $500,000 gift to the College of Business, the Engagement Center offers classrooms, meeting rooms, coworking spaces, and a lounge to enhance student engagement and connection within the business community. The third item on the agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M to rename the LSU Leadership Development Institute to the Leadership and Workforce Development Institute to reflect and expand admission. The renamed institute will expand LSU's public service footprint, attract new funding opportunities, and help build a stronger, more resilient Louisiana workforce. The fourth item on the consent agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M for the continued authorization of the Riley Center for Media and Public Affairs. The Riley Center is the outreach and engagement arm of LSU A&amp;M's Manship School of Mass Communication. Over the past 25 years, it has built a strong reputation for addressing timely and complex issues, most recently focusing on artificial intelligence and mass communication, civic leadership, and energy innovation. Estimated costs over the next five years are not anticipated to exceed revenue. The fifth item on the consent agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M for the continued authorization of the Center for Economics, Business, and Policy Research, the CEBPR. Serves as a vital resource for Louisiana by conducting applied research on issues impacting the state's economy, public policy, and development initiatives. Under the continuous leadership of Dr. Dec Tarral, the center has completed over $18 million in funded research with projects often initiated by direct requests from state agencies, legislators, and private entities. Estimated costs over the next five years are not anticipated to exceed revenues. The sixth of the nine consent agenda items is a request from LSU A&amp;M for the continued authorization of the Georgian Jean Pugh Institute for Justice. The Pugh Institute advances research, education, and pro bono activities to promote justice in the criminal and civil legal systems in Louisiana and beyond. Estimated costs over the next five years are not anticipated to exceed revenue. The seventh item on the agenda is a request from the LSU Ag Center and LSU A&amp;M for the continued authorization of the Center for Research Excellence for the study of invasive species. The center is dedicated to protecting Louisiana's agriculture, ecosystems, and economy from the escalating threat of invasive species. The center operates with a robust portfolio of competitive federal and state grants supplemented by institutional and partner support, ensuring cost-effective program delivery. The eighth item on the agenda is a request from LSU Health Sciences Center Shreveport for the continued authorization of the Feis Wheeler Cancer Center of Research Excellence. With three main divisions, basic and translational cancer research, clinical cancer research, and cancer prevention and control, its mission is to advance cancer research, improve detection and treatment, and provide public education on prevention and survivorship. Renewal is warranted, given Louisiana's high cancer burden, the center's proven success in patient care and research, and its forward-looking plans to expand both treatment capabilities and public health outreach. The center is supported through a mix of grants, philanthropy, The center is supported through a mix of grants, philanthropy, institutional support, and clinical revenue. The last item on the agenda is a request from LSU A&amp;M to name the Offensive Line Meeting Room in the Football Operations Building, the Root Hogs Offensive Line Meeting Room in recognition of Dr. Robert Dugah and his wife Jean's longtime support of LSU athletics, specifically for the LSU football program and the Academic Center for Student-Athletes. On the field, Dr. Dugah anchored an LSU offensive line called the Root Hogs. Thank you for your consideration of these items.
Are there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Is there a motion to adjourn the committee? All in favor? Any objections? The committee is adjourned.
Thank you.
Supervisor.
Supervisor Mallett, please convene the Finance Committee.
Mr. Mallett? Mr. Zuschlog?
Here.
Mr. Alvendia?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Ms. Bonio?
Here.
Mr. Carmouche?
Here.
Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So we have one thing on the, the agenda today is to approve the operating budget for the current year. So, the details of it is included in your board packages, I'm just gonna hit on some highlights for you. Okay, so the overall operating budget excluding the HCSD is 1.38 billion dollars. And this, this screen shows you the individual total operating budgets for each campus. Just to let you know, 60% of the overall operating budget is self-generated funds, 39% is state, and 1% is federal appropriations to the Ag Center. If you include HCSD, it's 1.46 billion. This, what this does is show you the, the changes by institution. Just a reminder that this does include the one-time funding we got from the prior fiscal year. So looking overall, you can see by each institution the changes. It's an increase overall of 3.1%. Again, including HCSD, it's an increase of 42.66 million, and that's 3% increase. And what this next slide does is show you what, what were the one-time funding that we got last year by campus. And so you see, including the non-recurring appropriations and the supplemental bill that we got at the end of this past fiscal year, there is $31.5 million that we received in one-time funding. In the current year, we have $27 million in line item appropriations. And so the next slides we're gonna get to is just a, we have an opportunity, each campus submits their priorities for next year through the Board of Regents, to the Division Administration. We submitted them last month. And so I just wanted to show, we have an opportunity to submit, you know, up to seven priorities. And so I just wanted to show the top two of each. As you'll notice, most of them, the number one priority are, you know, merit increases for faculty and staff. We haven't received funding from the state for that in the past several years, so anything that we've done has been, you know, done with our own resources, either through enrollment or tuition, to do that. And so this is just giving you a brief overview by campus to show you what each, you know, their two, top two that they had submitted. I call this more of a, an exercise. Typically, the division doesn't take this and go give us money for these, but this does give us the opportunity to present our priorities. And so the next one you'll see up here is the top two for these next, next four institutions. And that concludes my presentation. Do we have any questions?
That was my question. Are there any questions? Apparently not, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year budget.
I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion in second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion? I got a motion in second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you Supervisor Mallett. Supervisor Aronson, please convene the Property and Facilities Committee.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Kane, would you kindly call the roll?
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Alvendia?
Yeah.
Ms. Bonio? Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Present.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Zuschlog?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. I would like to recognize Ms. Anzie Gilmore, there she is, Associate Vice President of Facility and Property Oversight. Would you please present the first item?
Yes, ma'am. So, item one is a request from LSU A&amp;M to approve an ACT 959 project for the Student Union restroom renovations. LSU A&amp;M auxiliary services has seeked approval for a project to upgrade the restrooms throughout the Student Union. The work will focus on modernizing each floor's restrooms to enhance accessibility, functionality, and overall use, user experience, while also addressing needed interior and utility improvements. The $1.7 million project will be funded through self-generated revenue. So if there are no questions, we request the approval of an ACT 959 project for the Student Union restroom renovation.
Are there any questions?
I just have two. When was the last time we renovated the bathrooms?
A thousand years ago. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that.
It's been a very long time.
And so my next one is, what is the timeline on the completion of this?
Once the design is completed, the, I mean, construction will take up to a year.
Good. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the item?
I'll move.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Alvendia? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion is approved. Thank you. Ms. Gilmore, please proceed with the following item.
Okay, so item number two is a request from LSU A&amp;M to approve, first, a last, it's a late submission to the FY 2627 capital outlay budget request, and two, the contract for the related LSU Pert Lab Research Well Number Two, Number Three project. So LSU A&amp;M is requesting to add the Research Well Number Three project to the FY 2627 capital outlay plan that this committee approved in June. This $10.16 million project is funded entirely by $2.4 million in federal matching funds, $2 million in previously allocated state funds, and up to $5.76 million in industry contributions. The project does not require any, any capital outlay dollars. The project will drill and equip a specialized research well at LSU's Pert Lab for carbon capture experiments with a design that includes a horizontal section to support advanced testing. It will be built in partnership with Chevron, Shell, ExxonMobil, and Halliburton to advance carbon capture research and training. Lemoine is serving as a general, or the construction manager. Professor Carsten Thompson is here if you have any questions about the project.
Good. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item?
I'll move.
Mr. Zuschlog? Second, Mr. Morris? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion is approved. Thank you. Ms. Gilmore, please proceed with the next item.
Okay, so item number three is a request from LSU UNIS to approve, first, a third amendment and restated ground lease agreement, and second, a first amended and restated facilities lease agreement, each with Bingle Village LLC related to the Bingle Village Student Housing Facility. The updated agreement will support financing of existing debt through a new loan, up to $5.35 million, the JP Morgan Chase, at a fixed rate not exceeding 5.2%, with maturity in 2032 and amortized through 2044. This refinancing was anticipated when LSU took over the LSUE residential facility several years ago. LSUE will continue to operate and maintain the facility, which has maintained strong occupancy, averaging about 94% since 2022, and positive cash flow, ensuring no adverse fiscal impact. These leases preserve LSU's right to assume ownership of the facility at the end of the ground lease. If there are any questions, I have Patrick Martin here with our real estate group and the leadership at LSUE.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gilmore? Is there a motion to approve the item? Mr. Alvendia?
Second.
Second, Mr. Zuschlog? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to call on, do we have one more?
Yeah. Perfect.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And at this time, I'll ask Mr. Trey Jones, our General Counsel, to present the final item.
Good morning. The final item before this committee is relating to a request to consent to a sale of the Sheehy Institute up in Shreveport. It is actually a building connected to and adjacent to our LSU Health Sciences Center, Shreveport campus up there. The property on which the building sits is owned by LSU, but we've leased it several decades ago to BRF. BRF built a building on it, and that's now being leased by LSU back for research and lab space. So, the, the current owner of the facility, we pay roughly $8 million a year in rent right now, which is adjusted by fair market value every five years. So BRF has asked if, if, for our consent, to sell the property to a third party for $100 million. At this point in time, the staff recommends withholding consent to that sale, which we are allowed to do under the lease documents, as we obtain an appraisal of the facility and make some assessments here. This is important to LSU currently because if the rent is based upon fair market value and this sale price becomes a fair market value factor, then our rent arguably could go up. And so we need to, some time to make some assessments. So at this time, we received a, a demand letter from BRF to put this on the agenda, put this before the board. At this point, the staff is recommending that we withhold consent, deny consent of that sale to a third party by BRF at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jones? Okay, is there a motion to approve the item? Mr. Morris?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henderson, thank you.
Question?
No.
You have a question?
No. Motion. Any objection? The motion is approved.
I got just one quick.
Go ahead.
To be clear on this, my understanding, the, the question was, up or down? Allow us to sell it for X amount of dollars, which, to your point, could affect the rent and everything else going forward, so you need time to assess all of that from a legal and financial situation.
Yes, sir.
But, as importantly, the question was also, we, by, by state law, I guess, and by just common sense, if we were going to buy it, bond it, or do something, then we have to get a, an appraisal of which the foundation has ordered.
Yes, that, that is accurate.
So we got the letter, and so we're responding to this because we got the letter.
Yes.
And if, if we didn't get the letter, we were still gonna move forward with assessing and making sure financially and legally, and that there was an appraisal that represented this properly. But since the letter required us to answer it one way or the other, we're saying no because we're doing all the other things to see what the best remedy is.
True. The only question that's before the board because of the letter we received from BRF is whether to consent to them selling the building to a third party.
And that's the only thing the letter says. We, we don't have any other movement. It's either consent or don't.
It's either consent or don't consent. Now, this has been discussion for months, but when they sent the letter, it required us to act, and our current action, our recommendation, and the action just taken.
Which is why we're denying it, because it was our only option.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Let me follow up. You said the foundation is requesting a fair market value. Which foundation?
The LSU Health Shreveport.
Okay.
Shreveport Health Sciences.
Okay.
And, and so, it would be, it's under consideration, that's what the purpose of the appraisal is, we are gonna look at possibly buying, just for the rent.
The appraisal serves a lot of functions. One of them helps us with maybe rent mitigation as assessments are made on fair market value adjustments, but also for other alternatives such as that.
Okay. I just wanted my question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I believe we've already had a motion to approve the item. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr., I think Mr. Morris and Mr. Henderson.
Yes, that's correct. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
I move.
I move.
Mr. Zuschlog? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The committee is adjourned.
Thank you Supervisor Aronson. Supervisor Carmouche, please convene the Athletic Committee.
Dr. Kane, can you call roll?
Mr. Carmouche?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Ms. Bonio?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Zuschlog?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Right. We have several items on the Athletics Committee today for our consideration. I would like to recognize Deputy Athletic Director Ms. Lori Williams to present these
Good morning. First, we have for your consideration an increase in the baseball season tickets for the 2026 season as well as the 2028 season. We are looking to increase season tickets by $50 in each of those years. This would apply to the bleachers section only. As you all may recall, you previously reviewed and approved, and approved, reviewed and approved an increase of the other sections within the last two years, so this is specifically for the bleachers section. We also have for your consideration a $25 increase in the parking lot of the Louisiana House Lot. This would move from $500 to $525 for the season parking. This is in, this is in agreement with the previously approved opportunity for the Athletics Department to increase parking by not more than $25 with approval of the Athletics Committee. That's it for item number one.
Okay. Are there any questions? Questions? Is there a motion to approve the item? Mr. Starnes?
Second.
Ms. Harrison? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion is approved. Ms. Williams, please present the next item.
Yes. Next, we have for your consideration an increase to the women's basketball season tickets for the 2627 season. That increase would impact all of the season, excuse me, all of the tickets within the PMAC. It would be a 25 or a $50 increase for the season tickets. We are also looking to increase parking for the season as well. That will take parking from $100 to $150 for the season. And lastly, similar to the previous parking amendment, we would like the opportunity to receive approval for the Athletics Committee to grant Athletics Department the opportunity to increase parking not more than $25, and then receiving approval from the board through the Athletics Committee in the future. That's it for item number two.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item?
Second.
Ms. Harrison? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. Ms. Williams, please present the next item.
Yes, sir. And last, for tickets, we have for your consideration an increase to gymnastics. We are looking at an increase in the 100 and 200 levels only. The increases will range from $0 to $75 per season ticket. We are expecting to receive an increase, as you all know, you previously looked at this or approved this, excuse me, this proposal for the 2027 season. Combined, this will allow us to aggregate that total increase in revenue to $243,000. That's it for item number three.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item? Morris?
Second.
Aronson? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion is approved. Ms. Williams, please present the next item.
Next, we have for your consideration the employment agreement for our new executive deputy AD and chief operating officer, that is Julie Cromer, who will be joining us. Julie will be joining us with a four-year contract. The salary for the first two years will be $510,000, and then it will increase years three and four to $530,000.
Are there any questions?
I have one question.
All right.
And I don't know if it's for this one, but in, in, like...
And I don't know if it's for this one, but in...
This is a...
Employment contract. Employment contract for Julie Cromer, executive deputy AD.
Okay, no questions. Is there a motion to approve the item? Morris?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The motion is approved. Ms. Williams, please present the next item.
Next, we have for your consideration a new employment agreement for Jay Johnson, our head baseball coach. This will be a seven-year contract, taking us through '31, '32 with Coach Johnson. The seven-year contract will terminate August 31 of 2032, and the salary for Coach Johnson in the first year will be $3.05 million and continue annually with a $100,000 increase.
You got a question? Go ahead.
On the incentive contracts, or more so on if someone wants to come on this one specifically, but across the board, but in this one specifically, to take him somewhere else. We do have a buyout, correct? And what is that, do you know?
Yes, sir, we do. And it would start in the year one at $7 million and then decrease $1 million until the last year.
Okay, thank you. That's good, we finally got that.
I move to approve the contract.
All right.
Second.
Great man, great coach. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Motion is approved. Ms. Williams, please present the next item.
Yes, we have for your consideration another employment contract for our baseball assistant coach, Josh Jordan. This is a three-year contract. His current contract ended June 30 of this year, and so, this will give him a new three-year contract. His salary will be $470,000 for the first year and increase $15,000 each of the next successive years.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the item?
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objection? The motion is approved. Ms. Wheaton?
Can I ask her a question?
Yep.
On that particular contract?
Yes.
If we would terminate him, is there a buyout?
If we terminate him, we will owe him nothing for cause. If we terminate him for cause, we'll owe him nothing.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve the item? Morris, Ms. Harrison, all in favor? Any objection? The motion is approved. Ms. Williams, please present the next and last item.
And if I could add something, Supervisor Mallett? Supervisor Mallett, I just want to make sure that we're clear. If we were to terminate without cause, the amount that we would owe would be 90% on the contract.
So, if he's not performing and the coach wants to get rid of him, we're going to pay him 90%?
Yes, sir.
Without cause?
Without cause, yes, sir.
If he's not doing his job and they want to get rid of him, I have a hard time paying him 90%. I mean...
That might be with cause.
That...yes, sir.
You're right. It may be, but we have a tendency to have these big buyouts, even if they're not performing according to the coach or according to the...
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. On these issues...on the issue of buyouts, how does our practice of having buyouts in our contracts compare to the industry? Are we out there cutting edge and no one else has buyouts but LSU? Or are these buyouts consistent in this industry?
It's very much an industry practice. We've been able to reduce that. In most instances, it's 100% without cause. We've been able to reduce that to 80 to 90% for our coaches' contracts. So, that is better than the industry in many respects.
That's been my experience. And so, what would happen if we decide, hey, we're going to be the first university sports program in America to have a contract without a buyouts in it? What would that do, in your estimation, to our ability to recruit and retain talent?
It would be almost impossible.
Thank you.
But at the same time, if you sign a $100 million contract and they don't perform, if they're doing that the rest of the country, that's fine, James. But I...you know, we spent $20 million on Coach O. And I'm hoping that we don't have to do that. But if we get in that same situation with the one we just signed, these buyouts could cost...it would be financially terrible to us. I don't understand what's wrong with performance. That's all I'm concerned about. I hope to God that doesn't happen. But I get what you're saying, but that's also why we've got to send some big buyouts right now.
Sure. And I think if we...to respond to that, if we can go to Congress or somebody and say, no more buyouts across the country, or get something that levels the playing field, then I would agree. But as long as we have to live within this framework, we could be idealistic all we want, and then we wouldn't be able to field a competitive team. And so, I don't disagree with you on how distasteful a buyout can be under certain circumstances. But if that's the marketplace, and if it affects our ability to attract and retain top-notch talent, then we can't be the first out there. We have to play the game with the rules that we're given.
Well, Mr. Chairman, the market dictates these contracts.
Okay, I hear you. Okay, I'm going to stay quiet, but I'm going to tell you, I don't agree with it. We can be the first to break the mold.
Are there objective metrics for cause? I mean, are there metrics you look at?
Well, it's no different than us. If we hire somebody and he's not performing at my job, I'm probably going to say, it's not working, you need to go. But if I got to pay him a big old buyout, I don't find it...I'm not a big fan of it. That's...I wasn't a big fan...I ain't been a big fan of it. I hear what you're saying. I heard that same statement when we signed that $100 million contract. And that's fine, until it collapses. And then LSU's got a big old... We... Hold on.
The market dictates...
Remy, hold on. We have... Can you answer Rico's question about framework?
As it relates to metrics?
Yes.
They're based primarily on behavioral things, contracts, in terms of NCAA violations. They would have to be those things that aren't necessarily performance-based, but really not meeting the expectations of an employee just generally, the standards that we would have for our head coaches. So, it could be based on behavioral things, personal things, how they're conducting themselves. Those would all give us reasons. And in egregious situations, if there is a failure to perform their job as a head coach or an assistant coach, we could use that as well.
Thank you.
Fortunately, here at LSU, we have elite...we have elite athletic coaches. We have the best in the country. Our football coach is the best in the country. Our baseball coach is the best in the country. We have absolutely...we're in a different kind of tier than other schools. And when you're here, the coaches we have, the market dictates large buyouts. They're for our protection too, because everybody wants our coaches, okay? So, we look at it from...
This is...I thought this was a buyout if we decided to farm. I wasn't talking about a buyout if they come to get him. That's two separate things, Remy.
Well...
It's two separate issues.
But the point is, these are why these things exist. We attract top coaches. We're not going to attract any coaches or keep any coaches that don't have these clauses in their contract. That's what the market dictates.
Look, I don't disagree, but I tell you right now, if I'm that good, I don't mind signing that because I know I'm going to perform. Right? If I'm that good, I ain't scared of that.
I move if we hire Lee Mallett to be the baseball coach?
No. All right. I want Jay Johnson to be the baseball coach forever and ever and ever.
Look, I think we ought to start considering somehow to protect ourselves on a performance basis. Just think about it. I mean, I'm going to be quiet.
All right, last item.
We still have one more on item number six. Sorry. We have Josh Simpson's employment contract. It's a three-year contract that will take him to 2028. This is for $250,000 for the first year with a $5,000 increase thereafter.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll move.
All in favor? Any objection? Motion is approved. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee?
We have one more.
Oh, you have one more, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay. We have the new employment contract for our head...excuse me, not head, for our assistant women's basketball coach, Gary Reedus. This is a two-year contract for Gary. His previous contract terminated June 30 of 2025. There is no increase in his salary. This is merely a two-year extension.
I move to approve the contract.
No questions? Starnes, motion approved. Morris? All in favor? Any objection? Motion is approved. Is there a motion to adjourn the committee? All in favor? Any objection? The committee is adjourned.
That's right. We're done.
Thank you Supervisor Carmoosh.
We'll discuss it in the back.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to recon...wait, what? Yeah, reconvene the board meeting. Is there any objection? Without objection, the meeting will now come to order. Ms. Marilyn, please call the roll, or Ms. Kane.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Ballard, just motioned that he was here. Mr. Alvandia?
Here.
Mr. Amator? Ms. Aronson?
Here.
Ms. Bonio? Mr. Carmoosh? Mr. Henderson? Ms. Jones? Ms. Moran?
Here.
Mr. Morris? Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Temple? Mr. Williams? Mr. Zuschlog?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve all committee recommendations from today's committee meetings. So moved. Second? Second. Any objections? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Okay. For our approval, are the minutes of the board professional development meeting of June 26, 2025, executive committee meeting on June 26, 2025, and board meeting minutes on June 27, 2025, that were previously provided. Does anyone have corrections? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
Moved. Second? Is there a second? Yeah, there was a second. Any objections? Hearing no objections, the motion is approved. For our approval today, are the reports to the board for routine business items. Are there any questions? I will entertain a motion to receive the reports. So moved by Pat?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zuschlog. Any objections? Hearing none, this is approved. The faculty and staff advisors' reports are next on the agenda. First, Dr. Daniel Turone. Did I say that right, Daniel?
You did.
All right, good. I'm getting it right. Will present on behalf of the faculty advisors and LSU A&amp;M staff, Senate President Quinn Nekah. I don't know if I got that right. McDonald will present on behalf of the staff advisors.
Thank you, and good morning supervisors. Before I get to the campus reports, I'd like to thank you for passing item three from yesterday's executive committee meeting agenda. As you know, this has been a matter of interest to the faculty, and we appreciate your responsiveness to our feedback. I'd also like to thank Chairman Ballard, General Counsel Jones, and Executive Director Kane for maintaining regular communication with us throughout the process. And now to the campus reports. LSU Ag Center. Mary Beth Lima, LSU Department of Biological and Agricultural Engineering Chair, was inducted as a fellow into the American Society of Agricultural and Biological Engineers. Christine Coker is the new LSU Ag Center State Vegetable Specialist, Horticulture Extension Agent for Southeastern Louisiana, and the Hammond Research Station Research Coordinator. Evelyn Watts, School of Nutrition and Food Sciences, was awarded the Grace Struz Lehman Professorship in Human Ecology. The LSU Ag Center was awarded 45 grants in July and August that totaled approximately $3.3 million. Dr. Todd Tarefa, Associate Extension Director of Youth Development for H&amp;FA, was awarded the Moreau Foundation Supreme Champion Livestock Professorship, supporting the Ag Center State Livestock Show and livestock research and related projects, including animal husbandry, selection, genetics, nutrition, health, economics, and marketing. Gavin Sparks, master student of Dr. Connor Webster, was the first-place individual student out of 109 students representing 13 universities and the first LSU student to win the top award at the Southern Weed Science Society Contest. LSU Alexandria. LSU A has welcomed 13 new faculty members for the 2025-26 academic year. This expansion helps relieve the pressure created by recent growth in both campus-based and online programs. Enrollment is projected to remain around 7,600 students for the fall semester. Online enrollment has grown significantly, increasing by nearly 30%, while on-campus enrollment has risen by almost 10%. This year's freshman class will be the largest in LSU A history, with more than 600 students enrolled, including over 500 campus-based freshmen. We are also excited that LSU A will break ground on additional campus housing on September 16. All dean positions are now filled with permanent appointments, giving each college stable leadership. The final two vacancies in the College of Business and the College of Social Sciences were filled by promoting internal faculty members into leadership roles, reflecting LSU A's commitment to recognizing and advancing talent from within our own academic community. LSU A is proud to expand its commitment to military-affiliated students through a new partnership with the United States Army Garrison at Fort Polk. Building on our designation as a gold-level military-friendly school, this agreement formally establishes an educational collaboration designed to serve active-duty personnel, veterans, retirees, and their families. As part of this partnership, LSU A will begin offering classes directly on the base to better support the academic and professional goals of those who serve. Finally, LSU A and LSU Health Shreveport have partnered to launch an accelerated three-plus-three-degree pathway in occupational therapy. This innovative program enables students to complete a Bachelor of Science in Biology or Kinesiology at LSU A and a Doctor of Occupational Therapy at LSU HS School of Health Professions and Sciences in just six years. LSU Eunice. LSU E is pleased to welcome Dr. Charles Stewart as interim Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and Provost. Summer Ford, Psychology Assistant Professor, recently presented at the Louisiana Department of Health's 2025 Pediatric Imperinado Teleco Series on Individualized Education Programs, 504 Plans, and School Collaboration. All 30 graduates of LSU Eunice's Radiologic Technology Program have successfully passed the American Registry of Radiologic Technologists National Certification Exam on their first attempt. This 100% pass rate is the highest first-time pass rate in program history. Diagnostic Medical Sonography had eight graduates, all of whom were dual-registered in abdomen and OB-GYN, and all were employed before graduation. Associate of Applied Science in Fire and Emergency Services has a new online pathway through LSU E and LSU Online. After finishing the associate, eligible students can transfer seamlessly into the fully-online Bachelor of Science in Fire and Emergency Services Administration from LSU. 2025 Fall Semester is breaking records for registration in total credit hours, demonstrating the dedication of recruiting, registration, student success, financial aid, IT, and every academic division to make this possible. LSU E Athletics 2024-25 Academic Year garnered 58 NJCAA All Academic Student Athletes. Athletics scored a 3.28 cumulative GPA, 58 Academic All-Americans, and eight student athletes received a perfect 4.0 GPA. LSU Health New Orleans. The Director of NCI, Dr. Douglas Lowey, and the Director of NCI Office of Cancer Centers, Dr. Kristoff Pak, visited our campus to discuss our path towards NCI designation for LSU Health New Orleans. In alignment with Dr. Nelson's work on the NCI initiative, the School of Medicine has recruited a new Chief of Hematology/Oncology and is actively recruiting several other high-level clinicians and scientists who will play important roles in the cancer center. Additionally, a major renovation of nearly 200,000 square feet of lab space is on schedule to be completed in early 2026. This will help us recruit top scientists to the faculty. A proposal entitled Compassion in Motion: Training Tailored Communication Across the Clinical Continuum has been selected for funding of $1.1 million by the American Medical Association. This was selected from 200 competitive applications. This project is led by Doctors Peter DeBlou and Rachel Fiori and partnered with University of New Orleans Department of Computer Science Professor Ben Samuel. In this application, they proposed an education model utilizing AI-generated patients and AI coaches to enhance student and resident communications. This study will move medical education at the LSU Health New Orleans to a national audience. The School of Nursing has admitted 33 students to our off-campus instructional site in Baton Rouge, and the School of Public Health will be submitting its self-study to our accrediting agency, the Council on Education for Public Health, next month. Pennington Biomedical Research Center. The annual Men's Health Summit was held August 23 and welcomed more than 350 participants, volunteers, and sponsors to Pennington Biomedical. The center hosted 26 exhibitors and nonprofits, 44 individuals signed up for clinical trials, and more than 1,200 health screenings were conducted. Pennington Biomedical's Grow Healthy Initiative has begun a statewide tour to reach all Louisiana communities with visits made in Baton Rouge, Shreveport, and Monroe thus far. In the next two months, Grow Healthy will visit Alexandria and New Orleans. Pennington Biomedical's Advanced Endocrinology and Diabetes Clinic is open and seeing patients under Dr. Tim Gilbert's leadership. The opening of the outpatient endocrinology and diabetes clinic allows Pennington Biomedical to move from research to prevention, to detection, and now the treatment of chronic endocrine diseases. The clinic provides specialized care for patients managing diabetes and endocrine disorders, bringing world-class expertise to the region. Only a few months after it formally launched, the Advanced Endocrinology and Diabetes Clinic is officially accredited by the Association of Diabetes Care and Education Specialists. LSU Health Shreveport. LSU Health Shreveport achieved a record-breaking year in research growth and impact. Notable achievements in research include securing over $24 million in external research funding, a 13.3% increase over FY '24, marking the largest year-over-year growth since FY '18, despite national reductions in federal funding, recruiting 14 new research faculty from top-tier institutions, bringing $20 million in new NIH funding to North Louisiana, and significantly expanding research capacity, and submitting 200 grant proposals to more than 30 funding agencies, demonstrating broad engagement and competitiveness. LSU Health Shreveport was also selected as a new site for the U.S. Department of Defense's National Disaster Medical System Pilot Program. This is a congressionally authorized program led by the National Center for Disaster Medicine and Public Health. The School of Health Professions and Sciences has established new academic partnerships with MOUs, with LSU S, which created a two-plus-two agreement for cardio-pulmonary science, cardiovascular technology, and medical laboratory science programs, and LSU A, which established an agreement for the Occupational Therapy doctoral program. The School of Graduate Studies has established a strategic goal to achieve R2 Research University status. Having already met the research expenditures criterion, the focus is now on increasing annual PhD graduates to 20 or more annually. Classes also continue to increase, and new efforts are being made to encourage faculty mentorship in order to meet this goal. LSU Shreveport. Student Government President Devash Sarda became the first LSU S student to represent all college students statewide as the student representative to the Louisiana Board of Regents. Computer Science Faculty Dr. Subhish Chakrabarti is leading a lab in artificial intelligence and machine learning that continues to receive national recognition. Masters and undergraduate students won a first-place research post reward on automatic spine segmentation at the National Aim Ahead Annual Meeting in July, and eight students also presented at the Intermountain Engineering Technology and Computing Conference. Dr. Alan Grant, new Dean of the College of Education and Human Development, played a critical role in the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina as an administrator with Louisiana's Virtual School. The LVS pioneered online education, both to display students but also to overburden school systems in North Louisiana, offering a variety of courses, but particularly AP, foreign language, and other advanced courses to students who otherwise would not have had access. LSU S was the center of the nuclear world as the host of the Nuclear Triad Symposium, which attracted hundreds of the nation's top defense industry personnel to Shreveport in June. LSU S broke its summer enrollment record for a second straight summer with 8,006 students, the fourth straight semester of record-breaking enrollment. And baseball coach Brad Neffendorf won various Coach of the Year honors, including at the NAIA level and at the national level, regardless of division. He captured the Skip Burtman Coach of the Year, which is the National Baseball Coaching Award. And LSU A&amp;M. President Lee and Provost Blanchard both attended the Faculty Senate Meeting on August 27, offering welcoming remarks and fielding questions from faculty. The visits were very successful, with those in attendance appreciating the opportunity to engage with both leaders and their candor in their remarks and responses. We look forward to having them join us again in the future. LSU's rapidly growing cybersecurity program, which earned the nation's top designation as a Center of Academic Excellence in Cyber Operations by the National Security Agency in 2022, has received a highly competitive $2.4 million award from the National Science Foundation. The new funding will allow LSU to continue and expand its Cyber Core Scholarship for Service program, the largest effort in U.S. history to educate highly-technical cyber warriors for national security careers. Five LSU faculty members have been awarded the National Science Foundation's Most Competitive Grant for Early Career Researchers, placing LSU in the top third among Southeastern Conference Universities for these awards. A team of researchers in the Kane Department of Chemical Engineering and the Department of Oceanography and Coastal Sciences has won a first-of-its-kind grant from the National Science Foundation to bring 10 of the country's most brilliant research students to LSU to pursue a PhD and emerge as leaders in energy and environmental science. The project, Widening the Nation's STEM Workforce in Louisiana, or WIN-WIN, has been awarded $1.6 million through the NSF's new EPSCOR Graduate Fellows Program. This brand-new program extends the impact of the agency's highly-competitive Graduate Research Fellows Program. It provides states and territories that historically have received a smaller share of federal research funding, such as Louisiana, with an opportunity to attract and retain top talent. That concludes the faculty report, and thank you for your attention.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. It's a great day to be a Tiger. My name is Quinnika McDonald, but I also go by Q, and I am the current Staff Senate President. And I'm so happy I didn't have to request the step stool in advance, you know, for the challenge. But anyway, we'll go ahead and talk about some of the great things our staff have been doing across our campuses. So the LSU Board of Supervisors Council of Staff Advisors, COSA, met yesterday, and here are some of our reports. Thank you so much. So, Pennington Biomedical Research Center. Dan already talked about the enrollment in the 23rd, but that was an event that had a lot of screenings, educational sessions, and self-defense courses to address health issues. More than 350 participants from across the greater Baton Rouge area attended this event in the past. And moving on, Pennington is also hosting the 2025 Be the Reason Annual Childhood Conference, October 2nd to the 3rd. The conference registration is being made available to center employees on a non-charge basis. Throughout the conference, attendees will engage with dynamic speakers and leaders working at the forefront of pediatric health and wellness. Sessions will highlight practical tools, success stories, and policy approaches that can be applied within schools, healthcare systems, and communities across the state. This month, Small Shift's team is focused on tips to stay healthy so that their active employees can remain on the goal during the last days of summer in South Louisiana. LSU Eunice. At LSU Eunice, they achieved their third year of record enrollment. A huge thank you to all of the effort, staff, and faculty who worked tirelessly to reach that goal. They're also planning their annual trunk-or-treat community event on October 26 from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. on campus. This event in the past has gained over 2,000 people in attendance. LSU Eunice also partnered with Acadian Medical Center to open an onsite counseling center that is free for students. LSU Alexandria. New senators were welcomed to the organization. They also held a Fall Faculty and Staff Convocation. Staff Senate introduced those new senators and reiterated the important role that staff plays in supporting the LSU A community. In July, they had hosted a representative from Patford Emergency Medical Services who shared valuable information. They also welcomed a tank to campus. The university police department assisted with that. The escort and the facility staff gave it a fresh coat of paint and personalized it with the LSU A logo. LSU A proudly celebrated the completion of the tower with a lighting ceremony that welcomed students, faculty, staff, and community members to attend, as well as LSU A freshmen participating in the start of this new tradition, which was the freshman convocation. LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans. At the LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans, they are holding their first election since the inaugural Senate started. Elections will be held in October with new senators starting in January. On October 28, they will host their first pumpkin decorating contest and trick-or-treating. They will be collecting items for a shelter for this event, and they will also plan to collect for the Toys for Tots campaign this holiday season. They are also in the process of developing a scholarship for staff members to use to further their education. LSU Shreveport. At LSU Shreveport, two votes placed in the top 50 at the Bassmaster College National Championships. They also had a new all-time summer enrollment record with 8,006 students. LSU S student body president Devash Sadhar became the first LSU S student to represent all Louisiana public colleges on the Louisiana Board of Regents. He was originally sworn in the Board of Regents Student Board Member in June. And then the LSU S Pilots baseball team was inducted into the Northwest Louisiana Walk of Stars. An engraved concrete home plate was laid in the Shreveport Downtown Red River District, and they are also excited to host a trunk-or-treat on October 28, as well as participate in Fall Fest on October 31. LSU. Our Staff Senate held a successful school supplies drive, where approximately 2,000 bags were distributed, which benefited 65 staff and their family. The Staff Senate also held a virtual listening session to hear from staff members on a variety of topics on the A&amp;M campus. We are currently also working to implement a staff crisis fund to help staff members during an emergency. And then LSU Ag Center. At LSU Ag Center, they hosted the annual Field Supervisors Meeting on campus on August 26. They brought in over 80 supervisors from around the state for professional development and updates. They are also launching a new professional development series in October that is open to all faculty and staff called the Supervisor Success Series. It is a series of micro-learning events hoping to attract a larger audience for training on supervisory topics. They also held their bigger bash for the College of Agriculture this past Friday, and they were happy to be joined by intern President Lee to welcome students back to campus. That is the end of the Staff Advisory Report. Thank you so much.
Thank you both for being here today and sharing your reports with us. They are very, very helpful. Mr. President, please proceed with your report.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Good morning, everybody. I would like to thank Staff Senate President Ms. McDonald for inspiring me. It is a good day to be a Tiger. In my world, every day is a good day to be a Tiger. So thank you for that. Earlier this summer, I shared how, across the system, we are not only growing enrollment but also achieving historic graduation successes as we build the workforce and talent development pipeline for Louisiana and beyond. That pattern not only continues, but in fact accelerates. On the flagship campus this fall here, we have welcomed the largest incoming class in our history as of this morning. 8,155 freshmen enrolled, a nearly 5% increase over last year. More than 60% of these students are Louisiana residents, and among their numbers are 458 valedictorians, which I don't know about any of y'all, but I never came close to achieving that status. An increase, a significant increase in the number of students that are graduated in the top 10% of their class and are largest cohort ever for the Ogden Honors College. So the quality and scale of students that we are attracting is like nothing we've ever seen in the history of the institution. But beyond that, as you just heard, we are achieving enrollment gains that are historic in nature at all of our schools across the state. What we are realizing right now, as far as I am concerned, is a real-time building of a global brand, one of the strongest brands in higher education, not only across the country but across the world. Those of you who have been around for a while may remember a few years ago when we were starting to get into online programming. And we aspired at that time. Maybe someday in the future, if we can really get our act together, we'll be able to get as many as 35,000 students served through online programming. Last year, we enrolled more than 38,000 unique students, and we are on the charge to hitting 50,000 in the next few years, and we're going to continue to do that. That is positioning us as one of the most significant brands and one of the most significant providers of online education, which provides an alternative pathway for students from different backgrounds to engage with the education that we deliver across our institutions. So very excited about that. As well, we continue to be a leader in addressing Louisiana's healthcare shortage and continuing to address Louisiana's healthcare problems. We recently just opened a new instructional site in Baton Rouge for the LSU Health New Orleans nationally-ranked Bachelor of Science in Nursing Program. That is now up and running. Students are enrolled, and we are expecting that students, that enrollment in that in the coming years will really continue to accelerate. But it will be net new enrollment, will not drain off of the enrollments in New Orleans, but will add to the healthcare workforce that is so much needed here in Louisiana. LSU A, as you heard recently, secured a $1.2 million Hero Grant from the Louisiana Department of Health to expand its Associate of Science in Nursing program. LSU Alexandria and the LSU Health Shreveport launched an accelerated three-plus-three academic pathway in occupational therapy, which will allow students to earn a bachelor's degree and a Doctor of Occupational Therapy in about six years. As well, LSU Shreveport and LSU Health New Orleans, or excuse me, LSU Health Shreveport introduced two-plus-two pathways for degrees in cardiovascular technology, cardio-pulmonary science, and medical laboratory science. This is the kind of cross-institutional collaboration that really differentiates us, not only within-state but nationally. It's the kind of synergy that Louisianans should expect from their flagship system, and we are delivering on mission. And I just could not be more proud of the collaboration that we are seeing across institutions. As you know, we're continuing to advance cancer care. A couple of weeks ago, under the leadership of Chancellor Nelson and his team, they brought in the NCI Director, Dr. Douglas Lowey, who met with many of the board members, elected officials, community stakeholders, with a really significant show of force, letting them know that Louisiana LSU is coming together as a team to attract this critical resource to help combat this scourge of cancer among Louisianans, giving them a place to get treatment within their own state so they don't have to go out of state. So Chancellor Nelson, to you and your team, thank you so much for your leadership there. We're going to get this done. We're seeing it. It's coming into sight, and we look forward to doing a victory lap on that. Recently, LSU hosted its first-ever biomedical research retreat that invited more than 140 researchers from across the system together, that came together to discuss problems, to discuss the path forward. There was a very fruitful retreat. At the end of the day, on day one, they basically had to ask the scientists to leave the building because they were continuing their conversations past the end of the discussion. They were so energized by getting to talk about their opportunities to collaborate with one another, and we're already seeing several new collaborations emerge from that meeting of the minds, which we're so excited about. Pennington Biomedical Research Center continues to deliver on its mission, conducting world-class research. Just in the last couple of days, we've seen another, not only highly impactful but highly heralded study that came out, which is reducing visceral fat and improving sleep quality in obese adults, focusing again on their signature work related to nutrition. It involves an international team of researchers, and thank you, Dr. Kerwin, for your leadership with Pennington and the great work that continues to come out of there. In other focal research areas, this week, we hosted an LSU Carbon Technology Symposium. And importantly from that, not only was it strongly attended by engineers, scientists, and industry partners, but there we announced the reorganization of several units into what will now be the LSU Energy Institute. And Dr. Twilley, Vice President for Research, announced that we have set our aspiration. LSU is going to become America's energy campus. We're going to deliver high-quality education. We're going to continue to partner with industry. We're going to continue to conduct state-of-the-art research and innovation to establish as the energy campus in the state that is the energy capital of the country. As well, our work in cybersecurity continues. You heard about our $2.4 million Cyber Core Scholarship for Service program, where we are giving students the tools to get training and then putting them to service to protect America's national security infrastructure. And then as well, the LSU Ag Center continues to deliver on mission. They are now really aggressively rolling out their strategic plan, Louisiana Solutions Global Impact. They've just released a hype video, and yes, we have hype videos in agriculture. It is the best one I've seen in ag, and you can see it online. But we're very excited about the work they're doing. And Dr. Slassey, thank you for your leadership there. This summer, we continued our commitment to investing in people. We were able to deliver on raises for faculty and staff across many of our institutions. They are the lifeblood of what we do, enable us to continue to deliver on mission, and we will continue to prioritize people because ultimately, we are in the business of people. I want to once again commend our six newest Boyd professors. I called two of them. One of them said, "I have to sit down. I was not expecting this. I am so emotionally overcome." And I almost teared up with him on the phone. When you live in a world of scholars, accolades and that kind of thing mostly don't matter. They're driven by their passion, by their love of inquiry, by their love of discovery. And every once in a great while, somebody says, "You know, you're actually pretty good at this. You did a good job." And he was just overcome with emotion. And this particular gentleman, of course, is as well the first scholar to be recognized at LSU Shreveport with the recognition of this stature. The Boyd professorship is the highest honorific, and nobody knows when people are under consideration when it's going on, and he was caught off guard. And as well, it turns out that the other gentleman I called, Dr. Pace, I have known him and had a great relationship with him for the last 15 years. And he also was just absolutely delighted and overcome and could not wait to share that news with his family member. So thanks for this family member. So thank you to everybody who worked on that. And then just in conclusion, over the last week or so, we commemorated the horrific disaster that was Hurricane Katrina. That was a terrible, terrible event for Louisiana, for New Orleans. Many, many people lost their lives, their homes, their livelihoods. And part of what we were commemorating was not only that loss, And part of what we were commemorating was not only that loss, but also the role that an institution like LSU can play in helping us address a natural disaster of that magnitude. There are, I personally believe that the American research institution, the public research institution, is the most significant institutional form to ever have emerged out of Western culture. And this was an example of the role we can play. This is the only type of institution that can serve as a location, which is a forward operating base for an emergency operation like that. It's the only place that can bring in refugees, that can maintain power and water, that can maintain a military presence. It's the only place that could absorb thousands of students and faculty and staff that were displaced from their institutions in New Orleans. And it is the only place that could conduct scientific and engineering research to inform why this happened and how we can avoid it in the future. It's the only type of institution that brings the type of skill and knowledge that is needed to do long-term follow-ups on the reconstitution of human communities and how they can come back together and how they are differentially successful in doing that. So we had very, very significant events and very emotional events, including General Honore joining us to provide his perspective on that. And that was a very significant moment last week, and again, a recognition not only of the lives lost and the lives disrupted, but the very, very unique role that an institution like ours can play in mitigating the harm and damage and getting a better understanding of it going forward. In July, the Chronicle of Higher Education reported that national public confidence in higher education, for the first time, I think, in over a decade, actually turned around, and it turned up, and it increased by six percentage points. So favorable dispositions among Americans towards higher education increased. As I've tried to highlight in today's report, when we as a system, when we collaborate to produce talent and to produce innovation and to solve problems, when we deliver on our mission that directly impact the lives of Louisianans with real solutions that have impacts well beyond the confines of our state, when we do that, we will continue to earn the trust and continue to earn the confidence of those that we seek to serve. Students and families will continue to choose our institutions for their higher educational needs. Federal agencies and state agencies and nonprofit agencies will continue to invest competitive research dollars in us when we work together and when we deliver on mission and when we continue to deliver excellence in everything that we do. So by my assessment, at every turn in everything we're doing, we continue to build teams that win in Louisiana for the world, and as I continue to say everywhere I go, in every field of endeavor, when people see our colors, the first thing that comes to mind is that this is what winning looks like. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, President Lee. Mr. Starnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Research and Agricultural Extension Committee didn't meet today, but I'd like to point out, thank you, Dr. Nelson, for hosting Dr. Lowey, and thank you, Mr. President, for making those remarks about the NCI effort, the dinner you hosted in New Orleans, the conference that you hosted. I think it's extremely important that we keep our focus on our NCI efforts, and I thank you for your leadership in that regard. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for including me in that dinner and others. It was, like President Lee said, it was extremely well-attended, and I think we put on a good face and showed a good front from all sectors of Louisiana about why it's important that LSU achieved NCI designation. So thank you, Dr. Nelson. And Dr. Kerwin, dovetailing with what President Lee said about our global brand and our scholarship, I know that you presented in Stockholm as representative of Pennington on your research to the Nobel Forum, and Dr. Shower, the great Dr. Shower, is right now presenting at an academic conference in Santiago, Chile. So LSU has a global brand. We're very proud of it, and I thank you very much, Mr. President and Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to make remarks. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starnes. Yeah, it was a wonderful, wonderful dinner and a great step forward for LSU Health Science Center and our medical schools. So thank you, and the cancer, obviously. We will not meet today on Research and Ag because the professor had a family emergency, so just letting y'all know that, but we will pick that back up. Once again, I'd like to extend my sincere gratitude to everyone who participated in today's board meeting. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to warmly welcome our students back across the LSU system. We are proud of your determination, and we look forward to celebrating your success this semester. To our administration, faculty, and staff, your work each and every day is invaluable, and it sets LSU apart. Thank you for your dedication to our students, our campuses, and our mission. In August, we convened the first meeting of the Presidential Search Committee. This marks the beginning of one of the most important responsibilities of this board, identifying a leader who will carry LSU into the next chapter. We are seeking someone with the vision to strengthen LSU's role as a catalyst for progress in Louisiana, a voice of influence on the national stage, and a beacon of innovation to the world, similar to what we were talking about with NCI. Our goal is to find a president who not only honors our traditions, but who also embraces the bold opportunities ahead, someone who can elevate our research, support our faculty and students, and expand LSU's reach and impact. My colleagues and I are committed to a thoughtful, inclusive process that strengthens LSU's legacy of leadership, achievement, and impact for generations to come. Also last month, Supervisor Starnes, Alvin Dia, and I, along with interim President Matt Lee and UNO President Kathy Johnson, kicked off the first of many collaborative meetings as we officially welcome the University of New Orleans back into the LSU family. This is an exciting historic moment for our system. Today, I would also like to recognize and express our deepest appreciation to Mr. Richard and Ms. Susan Lipsy. Their remarkable generosity, most recently through a gift exceeding $1 million, continues to strengthen LSU and directly impact our students. Their contributions support the Honors College, the College of the Coast and Environment, our ROTC cadets, and the School of Music. Please join me in applauding the Lipsy family for their unwavering commitment to the LSU system, our cadets, and our ROTC program, and our country. And before we adjourn, how about those Tigers? Or as Matt would say, "How about them Tigers?" Congratulations to our football team on their first win of the season. Thank you all, and as always, go Tigers. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? The meeting is adjourned.